One more here, so we're gonna pitch and call the meeting's order.
Yes, Amy right there.
We're gonna call the meeting order. And we'll start with any council reports. Well, first of all, we need to recognize that that's what we have a very sad atmosphere. And we had a wonderful celebration of life for Glenn last Saturday. And I guess we know he's at his meal. And I just need to ask everybody to keep Diane and help some prayers. Been a rough time in the border, but Glenn talked to her today, she's doing okay. She's doing pretty well this Saturday. And convinced that I think we go to Arizona, we'll do this this year around Labor Day. So it'll be good for her to get out of town. And so now we'll go on to any council reports.
Mayor, I would just like to commend the city staff and residents. There was a lot going on this past Saturday. And I very much appreciate the number of especially first responders, police and fire, who covered Operation Back to School. Jim Gilmore, Captain Landers, James Patterson, Ken Hall, and Sid Paul Smith. Some of them sent our family members so that they could be at Glenn's service and that Six Stones could be covered. But I very much appreciate everybody pitching in and everything was a great success. So thank you.
And then my family and I had a fantastic time at the concert. It takes a star on Thursday night in Free Bagwell. It was awesome. Keeps getting better in my mind because now we have hamburgers and cheeseburgers and nachos and all that stuff at the events.
We like that.
So it was awesome.
Gary?
Yeah, I'm good.
Any anything?
A little bit.
Well, several of us did attend the TML Regional Region Eight meeting. And we didn't call you though, it was very nice. The speaker was a lady from TML who gave us some updates on what's going on there and will be passing out some information to her shortly. So Kim, anything for you? Miss King?
Mayor, I want to do something that is not on the agenda, but it's one of those things that if it is not proper, then we need to check and check our pulse and see what's going on with America if this is not proper. But we have a lady here tonight that is one of my favorite employees and it's Opfer. Opfer, right? Opfer. Opfer. My name is Yali. My name is Mary. And she had a very, very important demand in her life this morning. She's Amy West.
Speech? Um, I wanna say what an honor it was today. I didn't think you were gonna be that big of a deal, but I'm sorry, I get really emotional with Suzanne because she was there. But you know, when you're not born here in this country and you lived under a different type of government and then you come here and then you choose to become a part of this and be free to wake up in the morning and think your own thoughts and choose to do your own thing, it's not really like that in the rest of the world. So I was real thankful today since Suzanne was thankful to Ray. Suzanne said Ray would've came if he knew. I said, no, he wouldn't. He came over here and told me I'm a foreigner still.
Perhaps you worked here this long, you didn't know.
Last year, when he found out I was just a permanent resident legal agent, and he didn't understand that whole process and he said, "I was supposed to be here legally or not?" Oh, my God, that would be terrible. Suzanne understood the process, but I'm thankful to be a part of this. This year, when there was the election for mayor, I didn't, you know, try to help with all of that. But it really hit me that I really don't have the power to vote or to elect anybody because I wasn't a citizen. So there it is. Thank you, Gary, for in my.
One of the neat parts about this is the man that she's with is also a resident U.S. resident and a local pastor that did okay here in California. He's doing a good citizenship this morning. So this is something that I know Opfer has been working to encourage the town and community to be able to become citizens and get out and vote and exercise the rights of Americans. I just got a lot of respect for our love of the people, but those that are born here aren't easy. Amy, you had to go through the process of becoming American.
And I second it. It's wonderful. Even though we're just naturalizing, we can never be president, it's wonderful in this sense of this country.
So Wayne, as I thought about whether we ought to do this today, it hurts me.
It hurts like a hurricane.
Yeah, it's, if loving you ain't right, if loving you's wrong, I don't be right. If it's wrong, you're right.
Recent events item of community interest that passed.
Yes.
Opfer, congratulations. You're proud of it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I hope this doesn't mean you're so famous you don't want to talk. We need you here.
Do you hear that? I'm gonna leave that.
Thank you, Gary. The mayor mentioned the Porterville service. Just let you know that one of the first items on the agenda tonight will be a tribute to Glenn and Diane and her two sons will be here, I'm told. And so if you all would like to make a comment at the end of the video, or it's a slideshow, I guess, we better set the video. Feel free to make part of the comments you would say on what you'd like to Diane. And just a reminder to you that the heat spray will turn this weekend. We continue to have, I think it has to, I think it's four last week. So we continue to have spray every other week. Reminder, the city offices will close on Monday. And then please, please, please remember, this is on your agenda, either remember the public hearing for the tax rate, the next two weeks, at seven o'clock right here in Council Chambers, trying to zone commission will be meeting here. So we have our public hearing in there. Great for each day.
And Gary, but that is just the tax rate.
That is just the tax rate.
Only discussion is the tax rate.
And don't forget the photo op before that.
Photo op is it?
Six thirty.
And Council short.
So I think that's all we have, Mayor, other than the stuff. Topic's here. You ready?
I am ready.
All right, we're gonna have it. That's not one of your related TRAs and TRAs can just give you updates and frame anything they do.
Yes, I appreciate Bill Smith coming to actually give us a little update. He's been here recently and we have so many actions going with TRA that I thought it was good for Bill to not only talk about the couple that's got on the agenda tonight, but also to give you a little brief overview of where they're working in and around U.S. and what's coming in the near future for them.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and present the items that we have on your agenda. Brock Williams, James McDonald, he's gonna do most of the presentation. He's a young individual in our office. We just hired him. Maggie.
We don't owe Maggie.
And, but I wanted him to come and give you a brief update on this, but we have several items that we want to discuss with you and then talk about this. We're gonna water this off. I have a history to do. Please continue on, okay? But I'm gonna let.
Let's show how good you are.
I'm gonna let Dennis go ahead and show you the slide. And for that point, happy to be, happy to be.
All right, thanks, Bill. Mayor, councilmembers and city staff, my name is James McDonald. Happy to be here and give you a little bit of updates on the projects going on with TRA and city U.S. So our first two items are items that are on your agenda for this evening, which we'll talk about first. Our first project is the meter station rehabilitation. And this is meter station twelve O B for us. It's at Highway three sixty in Little Bear Creek, right across from Luke's Bear Creek Golf Course on the other side of three sixty. Here's the map where we are right here. The meter station is right off the highway three sixty, right along the creek. All of our pipelines and meter stations are at the low points. The easements that we're requesting is an access easement right off of the highway and then a meter station is going to have the structure to fence their background. The next one is the interlokal agreement for the side of the creek trunk outfall operation maintenance. This project is, part of this project is currently under construction, which you may be familiar with, is the northern end of it, Phase Two, which is currently under Highway one eighty-three. This next project, Phase One, which is confusing because it's coming after Phase Two, but it's a new pipeline project that's in the drainage utility easement and is a rehabilitation existing twelve-inch sanitary sewer pipeline, which after it's been rehabilitated, it will be transferred back to the city U.S. for operation maintenance at that point. So those are the two items on your agenda this evening. If you have any questions, I would be happy to address those now. We have a few more slides on other projects that are upcoming afterwards, so it's just more of a status update.
So I have a question. This is actually my neighbor. So what's the expectations? I understand that the creek goes through there. Y'all gonna be busting up all the concrete, putting in a new sewer and then laying a concrete again? Put a riverbed in the creek?
Exactly. The existing pipeline is mostly through backyards at this point. The new pipeline will be, it's a trephazoidal concrete channel, and so there will be, they will be busting up the bottom of that concrete, laying a new pipeline and then repaving it with concrete above it and then titling the existing pipeline from the backyards to the new interceptor.
And then as far as the Connect Drive and Marlene Drive, would those bridges still maintain themselves or do you ever rebuild all the?
The bridges will be untouched. They'll be boring of the bridges. They won't be open cut. The bridge will all access, no roads should be affected, given that construction.
Contractors might choose to soft cut the bottom of that channel. It depends on his, we don't try to dictate his methods of construction. So obviously constrain him to a certain force base, obviously, but he might soft cut it open in a section, lay a pipe that way. So there are methods that need to be constructed. Will they bust it up or, you know, or soft cut it? I don't know.
Hey, just, I'm just, just to make sure y'all understand that this is on your agenda on the same project you're talking about. This is construction of a new line and a rehabilitation of an existing line that is TRA's. And at the end of that rehab, they will convey that. So it's actually two lines.
That's correct. Several years, there's a little, there's a long history to this project. Several years ago, I'm not sure, back in the seventies or eighties, TRA took over the existing line that's there and started operating and maintaining it on behalf of the city, collecting wastewater from city U.S. and upstream cities in this case. And so we operated that system for a long time through a series of long events a long time ago. That was never, the easements for that pipeline were never exactly conveyed to TRA. So all these years, the city of U.S., through the sectional U.S., has owned that. So we got looking at this new project and thought, well, we're gonna give this pipeline back to the city. And we're like, well, you can give them back. They basically already own it. We've just been operating and maintaining under a contract. So in this case, what we needed to do is enter into this interlocal agreement and we're basically gonna give you back the operation maintenance of it. But we promised that if you wouldn't want an old pipeline officer. So we said, what we're gonna do is completely totally rehabilitate that old existing line. It'll keep and maintain the connections from individual houses. And then we're gonna reconnect, connect it to our new pipeline once the new pipeline is constructed. So that's the sequence of events. We put in a brand new pipeline that TRA will now continue to maintain in the bottom of that channel. And then we're gonna give them the rehabilitated pipeline to the city and the city will operate and maintain it, which has in house connections.
See the difference now? Before it was supplying a service to other than U.S. Now, once they complete the new line, that will be their main. This will be a, our main, because it will only be dealing with our sewer.
Well, I agree with you on that, but from a practical non-engineer standpoint, you got tremendously more capacity than.
Our new pipeline will be much more capacity, which we, in course, TCQ rules, we call it seventeen rules. We must plan for the future and that future is like a design line twenty-sixty. So we have enough capacity in the new pipeline to serve the city U.S. and TRA's other customers upstream. And then your collector line will serve you for, it's already developed, it's already there, it's already flowing wastewater into our interceptor. So our new interceptor will have plenty of capacity for additional cities that upstream cities as well.
And that line that we get will actually get more capacity than we need. So we'll be in good shape there.
So if our new development will go into the new line, is that right?
Pardon?
Will our new development go into the new line?
It can. It could. Depending on where it is, but one of the problems they have is for any time we try to hook a house connection or something like that up there, maybe, they don't like to do that, I don't blame them. And so this will eliminate that problem.
Should be good news for you.
Yeah. What is the condition of the pipeline north of one eighty-three and the south of the pipeline road? Is it still in good condition?
Well, we've replaced a small section north of one eighty-three. We had a construction problem. That's the phase two portion of this project. And we split it into two phases because text, not text, blue line contractor that were busted together with their design bill project. So we had to break this into two projects. That's why they're not, they're kinda like twins, but they're disconnected to some extent. So we had to kind of design that project and get that project started. They actually constructed it for TRA in accordance with our standards and then we're paying them proportionate cost as to how the land would cost from the term. But that's, that's what we do in that first phase.
So even north of that, though, is it in good condition? It's south of the pipeline?
It just so happened right there, if I'm not mistaken, either at the near, at or near the city line between the two cities. We typically don't go into the next city. We pick a, we will have a connection point there. In fact, there's a meter station there. So just north of that, there's a small section of pipe that we pick up, comes through the meter station's measure and then comes on down to the city here that's past one eighty-three. And I didn't really answer your question about the condition. The condition upstream is acceptable, but it's a very short section of pipe.
So the question I have, I didn't maybe give out, as we get to this project, are we gonna do some security process, letting these that know that the condition of the pipe will change, they'll have to have worries or the backup vendors? And all the things you did for the East Club of that sewer line there? Are you willing to be able to do something like that and maybe put out some order and others, something like that?
I think we can. We can probably do that in conjunction with the beginning of the construction part. Let them know, one, maybe their contractor will work with us, make sure that we let them know who's working in your backyard and why. And this will, it will explain the process as well as what this should do for the problems we had in the past. I don't know what those are, but those things we had some.
Yes, the foreman, for example, their house has been impacted several times and David Rush, East, has been something sick. Hear me? But it's been a long time coming and I've been talking about this for five years now. And I'm just glad to see him finally like to get it on tow. So go that to get on tow for him and then he will break around then.
I would say probably December, January, it depends on the topic. You know, holidays always problem for contractors to, not to my job, but contractors don't seem to work during holidays. And one of the things you mentioned that we probably will have a great deal of cooperation in the city in the time of construction because the homeowner is gonna need to know there's gonna be some interruptions, service. The security place is a quick way to go through, rebuild, take the pipeline, restore each one. I mean, they don't literally dig up each connection. They, the piece of equipment they use in the security place libraries they go through and they will find each one of those houses that are a connection and basically cut, plug out where that connection is in that line, restores the service in that.
Wow.
Yeah, and that's what I said when I first saw it. Wow, it's been, this type of technology's been around for about thirty years on that.
So the simple elbow where they come out and just drop in the sewer and we cut off and?
Well, no, inside the pipe where the cure to place soft goes in, it's, it has a resin in it. That resin gets set up either through using UV light or hot water, steam or hot water. And then once it's set, then the cutter machine comes back through and cuts plug.
Or where the pipe connects.
And so you don't have to dig anything up, hopefully.
Occasionally, depending on how, what you're lining, could cause a problem. Those are spot repairs, not the whole thing, but.
Those people never be happy when you're done.
We will be too.
Were there any other questions on this or the meter station along three sixty before then? If that's the case, we'll look forward. The next projects are just status updates for, just to give you an advance notice that we will be back. These projects, I believe, have been presented for. This project is affectionately known in-house as the alphabet project from all the letters and numbers in there, but it is.
Did Maggie that came up with that system?
This is prior to my, my time, but I can only imagine.
Oh, I got to write that down.
But this is a rehabilitation project along Highway ten here. And it is still moving forward. We should have bid the project and begin construction a little bit after the previous project discussed, so early next year. We'll be back on that as well. WF six and fourteen is a project that's currently under construction. It involves new pipeline and we're here, it is currently under construction. It's estimated to be completed late of this year. And there is a access easement that will be on the agenda in the next few meetings. So you can expect that it'll be access off of Trinity Boulevard. And this will be access to the pipeline and new meter station to be constructed.
It might be difficult to see, but there is a existing curve, I guess, call it an inland route, you know, which direction it comes from. The slope along Trinity, if you can drive along there, access to our existing easement is real steep. And our operation maintenance group that goes out with pieces of equipment have to drive up and down that slope. Although it's very steep, it's not safe in that particular location. So what we're asking the city to grant us is an access easement on permanent basis so that we can come off that curb cut, hopefully not, obviously not damage to curb, but it is just a cut. And then line their way down there to get back on to the east, to get on to the east or easy access, easier access, safer access really, or the easier access.
This will come on the ninth September?
That's what we're planning. We have easement documents prepared. We have to make some corrections to them and make sure they're all correct. And we will present those to the House so we can get it on your council's agenda, hope they're right.
And that's everything. So there are no questions about that. There are all of our pipeline improvements.
Anything for you, questions we might have?
I don't have anything else. TRA today.
Again, we appreciate that opportunity. If there's any other questions, please, in touch with us. We'll try to, if anyone can.
Thank you. Now, Mayor, I apologize to the slurs once again.
At least I wasn't next to you this time.
Yeah. Jeremy got it.
Three words, Zippy guys like.
Yeah. Give me a zippy guy.
No questions, we can play.
Yeah, I'm getting tired of them already. I've had a week.
All right, Mr. McDonald's gonna give us a trail update.
I think Mr. Kenny Mike's gonna pass out. I don't know how good this mic can show off or bad this mic show up on the screen, so Mike's gonna hand out the slides and the presentation so that maybe you might be a little better tech tells that than you can up here. Obviously, I just works out, but. I wanted to update you on a few things. I talked a lot about the regional bellwether. You've seen that term. You've heard that in various presentations of mine. So I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what they meant by the regional bellwether.
Did TRA come up with that?
I don't know. I'm not sure about that one. My house says no. And then I want to talk to you a little bit about the Tri-County Trail Network. Stephen and I went to a meeting back in two thousand thirteen, which, as we go through this, we see was a very productive meeting as it relates to the Glade Parks project. And then we've talked off and on through the years about a tri-market program. So I really want to thank David Allen, who he put in a lot of time on this with me and with Wes and Mike. But we thank the mayor for coming up with the proposed at least trail market program. So we wanted to run that by you and see if you like it and then we'll pursue it more. If not, then we'll bring back another proposed U.S. trail market program in another two or three years. How long it took us to get the person? So the regional bellwether, basically, you know, you can read the definition here. Basically, what we've got here is this is our regional trails master plan. It is a trail connection over ten counties, one hundred and seventeen cities in North Texas. It has been adopted by RTC. The corridors identified here in the bellwether are as planned, and I want, if I have a yellow highlighter, I just couldn't have done that on my presentation here, but I like that because that's gonna be an important part of this presentation as we go forward. Because the plan, the portions of the bellwether identified in the plan are prioritized for future funding. And then the, the cities that participate, in particular in this area, they've got Tri-County local level participation that I spoke about just a few minutes ago, so. Now, as we get into how these tie in, not only in U.S. but in the surrounding areas here, that's where the Tri-County Trail Workshop play a real key part of this because, as I said, Stephen and I met in two thousand thirteen with several different cities and groups over in South Lake. Colin hosted the meeting. And what the main objective here was, was to try to identify the many current proposed funded projects, unfunded projects, trail-related projects in all these different cities and then try to, based on all the different comments that were given at the meeting, pull it together in a map. And that's what I've made copies here because it's a little, it's a little difficult to see up here. But to try to pull it all together and see how everybody's plan meshes with the cities, the regions, the areas around them. So this is one big map that Jeff cut in parts for me so that we could try to make that to tell to this. But I wanted to start here because obviously this is our city, this is U.S. And as you can see, the different, the numbers here in the shaded areas are comments that were made by various groups that participated in the Tri-County Trail Network meeting that day. So don't pay a lot of attention to the shaded areas, but do pay attention to the legend on the right and then as it relates to the map, the solid lines, the dotted lines, the, what is considered, as you can see, the orange is that within the regional bellwether, we've got on-street existing, off-street planned, off-street existing. So you can see as it relates to U.S., I mean, what's solid green over on the right-hand side of the screen, that's our trails of U.S. What we know as trails of U.S. Once we go through Little Bear Creek. Bobby Park, Lakewood, McCormick Park, Reserve, McCormick Park. And then as you can see, and go back a couple of slides to a key word that I said planned because it would be prioritized for future funding. As you can see, the, what we had planned here is the trail through the Glade Parks and how it would ultimately connect to the Collieville Trail System. And we told you this, Collieville, Grapevine, and on down the line, so. But keep that in mind there, so. Then you can flip either on your sheet there or on the next slide here. This just shows how it continues from, from our region on Westford, North Carson Hills, Potomac. uh, from, from our region on Westford, North Carson Hills, Watauga. Again, you can see what's existing in their cities, what's planned in their cities, uh, what's funded, what's unfunded. Um, and what, what an important thing to remember as it relates to trails and trail projects, and how, when we say bell web, how it all ties in together. It, it's not all twelve-foot-wide concrete paved trail. A lot of, in fact, what is considered in the bell web are connection points, and connection points can simply be product trail, like what we have at the villages of Bear Creek, possibly sidewalk. Uh, so I think that's important to remember, because, um, there may be an idea out there that, that there's this grand trail system that, you know, you can go from McKinney down to South Fort Worth, and it's all this beautifully landscaped, twelve-foot-wide concrete trail. And although, hopefully you will be able to go from McKinney to South Fort Worth on a continuous, um, off-street pathway, it will not all be twelve-foot-wide trail. Some of it is shown in the plan, in the bell web, and in various cities' plans as sidewalks, so. As wires, as it connects, um, there is, um, town crossing, uh, through Blake Parks, there, there is a portion there, as you go north, where it will terminate as you go north, it will be a, a wider than normal sidewalk, but some of it will be sidewalk until it connects on the left side of Heritage to Collieville. And again, this just shows existing, planned, funded, unfunded, uh, in the different areas around us. So if you go to the cog website, you can see, and this gives a little bit better, uh, picture for you of how these trail systems tie in together. Um, you can see here that, uh, in the red is unfunded, uh, the green solid is existing, and the, the dashed part is, uh, funded, but currently not on the ground. Uh, so we've talked to you about how these will connect, uh, within our city and to other cities around us. So you can see this, I cut it off here, because, I mean, it goes further east, but I cut it off here, because I wanted to primarily focus on our area and what's west of us here. But you can see from, um, Irving has a pretty extensive trail system, and they plan to tie in, and that's where the red comes into play on the far right-hand side of the screen. They plan to tie that in, go up through the F W airport, ultimately connect, uh, with our trail system, there's something, Villages of Bear Creek. So as that would go through, and then you can see, the dashed portion there is the Blake Parks, it would then tie into Collieville, and then this dotted line up here in the corner, that is the Cotton Bell Trail that extends, uh, north of Grapevine, all the way down south to Trinity Park and Fort Worth. Here's kind of a much bigger picture, this primarily kind of centers in our area here with our trail system to Collieville, and then this can show you how ultimately it all will tie in and take you from, uh, well, this is showing our area up on the far right-hand side, all the way down Fort Worth, and you can see north of this too, prioritizing various trail systems up north. So, any question on that before I move into the trail marker program?
Hey, so, we're not showing with, are the trails behind the Walmart in Bedford that go west down and need all the power lines? Are they not official?
Well, if, if you, if I go back to the shaded areas, I would see like, um, Bedford there.
Oh, that's the?
Yeah, sixty-seven. The thing about that trail system in Bedford is that in order for, and y'all probably heard the story, uh, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but from what I've heard, at some point in Bedford's history, that trail system, the blacktop that you see along Cheeks Barker, all that right-of-way was dedicated as parkland, so that the road would never be widened on their part and take that away. Problem is, they don't put much money into that, if you want to call it a trail system. Uh, now, we have had discussions with Bedford about tying in to behind Walmart, and that, again, would be, be a sidewalk. But ultimately, to try to tie in to not only the right-of-way along Cheeks Barker, but also their concrete, actual nice trail system that goes under the power lines down through Bedford, so.
Because I'd love to get all of their money into the US economy via that trail system.
Well, we would love for them to just participate in that one little short section and be able to connect from ours to theirs, but, uh, I can't speak for the final, though. They, they have shown some interest and said that they support our project, but have been very non-committal on whether or not they would be willing to install and pay for their connection point to our trail system, so, we're hoping that they do.
You're on the trail marker, Bill, if you're done with the trail.
Unless there's other questions.
One other point, we want you to take away this, you know, we've got the grant application in for that Blake Park Trail, which we're running from the east side of one fifty-seven. And what's proposed is equipped.
Pretty exciting.
Pretty exciting. Uh, through Blake Park and Diane, and I mean, the point here today is to just let you know our critical path is, we ain't just paying funding for that. We believe it will be funded, we do, we'll find out very quickly that it will be funded. Uh, maybe some additional match, that match may come in developer, part development, but that is a critical one for our, to be able to hook up with Cotton Bell Trail, that's the main thing we want to show, is that that's not a kind of sky. Trail system that we're trying to connect to is a real trail system. Uh, so, it's described various means by which the trail is tightened, but if it does tighten, then it will be a critical one. So, we're excited about the process. The other thing we want to make sure that we can do is to operate this connect with Bedford, and, uh, we can be strongly encouraged, you have to occur, and then you know, to participate as well.
Question on the, you want underneath the bridge, right? I assume, uh, we'll have some sort of erosion control, keep moving on our trail, we'll go underneath the bridge one time in one, because that's not that wide.
Actually, it's a little wider than you would think. I, I should have, I mentioned that, uh, I don't have it, but, uh, yeah, it's actually, there's, there's a pretty large shelf under there, you'd be surprised, we've walked that several times, uh. In fact, if you went down there now, the stakes might still be there, we tried to mark the center line of where the proposed trail would be. And there's a fairly large shelf underneath there, under all the bridges. I was surprised, first time I actually got down there and walked it, but absolutely, I mean, we've worked with MMA, and it has, it has gone through some engineering and, uh, some studies, and made sure that what was sent in, in the grant application, uh, was had, would be sustainable to, you know, the erosion and, and the runoff from, from the roads up above. Because they all run right down those, those bridge embankments down the apron, so, yeah, we've taken all that into consideration with the drainage, and there would be some pipes under the trail in, in various locations that would take that water on into the creek. Uh, now, obviously, as we have along our entire trail system, when it rains, it, it'll, it'll get muddy. Uh, but that's part of the maintenance that the city, you know, expects to have, and continuing to, to maintain our trail system as we do everywhere else.
That's designed to take stop sanders?
Yes, sir.
So it's where our trail system, in many cases, built in-house, particularly those product trails.
How did you know the text out?
Well, this, this is well-designed, probably overdesigned, to take, be take out sanders.
Do you want to reference?
It'll be designed, uh, exactly the way the trail system through Bobby, uh, to McCormont Park, that was a, a text out, grant-funded project as well several years ago. And it had to meet those same classifications, like a little bit more now, so than what they were then.
So tomorrow this door is waiting, you may be able to ride a bicycle out here.
We're hoping they can, very soon.
Go ahead and cut down to the mountain, Charles.
Howard's waiting to make it over.
But as he's talking on his cell phone to one of us, soon he'll be in charge. Okay, so, as I said, Wes and Mike and David Allen and I sat and talked about a trail marker system, and you know, the challenge has always been with the trail marker system. Uh, you know, runners like to know how far they've gone, but the trouble is, it depends on where you get on the trail that determines how far you've gone, as far, you know, as it relates to the trail marker, so. What we have tried to do, and I think I got the wrong, I guess it doesn't matter, we'll start the east and head west. Well, so what we've tried to do is to look at it from a, a different angle, not so much as where do you get on the trail, but a, a clear start and end to the trail, and so what you see here, shown as MT one, pretty clever, MT stands for main trail. That's where David really came in handy. Um, if you started on one end at main trail one, and went all the way as far as you could go, which now terminates, Mr. Kenny said, in Crinkwood at MT eleven, and then hopefully, we will find out soon, that our project will receive funding, and will continue through Blake Parks as part of main trail. And the reason we did that is because everywhere else along this system is within a park where you would get on somewhere either at Trailwood, for instance, or Bobby, or McCormont, or the Preserve in McCormont, or somewhere in the villages. But this one actually goes from one end to the other. So what we've done is, each one of those, MT one, two, three, four, five, all the way through eleven, those are a quarter-mile park. So if you're on the main trail and you're at MT five, and, you know, there is, for some reason, uh, you need assistance, you can easily call dispatch and say, I see a marker that says MT five, and they know that MT five is right here on the map, where, where, where you're located. Or if you're a runner and you're on main trail, every time you see a MT marker, you run a quarter mile. That's if the app on your phone is there. Nobody pays attention to these, because they all have apps on their phones, but. Now, what we've done is, kind of spinning off of the, the MT or main trail, you will see these other identification markers, and these relate to the park that you're in. So there would be BB one, BB two, PR one, that's Preserve, marker one, Villages of Bear Creek, marker one, two, three. So that if you're off of the main trail, the marker then would identify what park you're in, and then it, it, there is, there is no distance related to the marker, it just simply is an identification, so that police or fire can respond to the closest marker of where you might be, so. Again, like Trailwood, for instance, there's Trailwood one, there's Bobby one, two, three, four. So if you're on kind of one of the spokes of the, off the main trail, they will easily be able to identify where you are on that trail system, so that they can respond, so the only actual distance markers along this is on MT or main trail.
That's a PT, I'm sure.
Yeah. Just saw that. I've, I've seen this about twenty-five times, I never saw that, so, thanks for pointing that out.
My pleasure.
Find my own mistakes. Thank you. So, you like it, you don't like it, you want us to keep working, but I mean, this only, this only took us about four years, so if you want us to.
We're gonna want to ask that first time.
But, but part of the foot dragger in here is, there's a, if you're a trail user, if you're parked out of that, it's just finding the proper. From my standpoint, the one sure thing about it, it is going to be so, that your, your, your users will not see logic, and it, we, we've had this at our, our for years, that, I mean, add markers. But obviously, where you start, if it's these, and it's a highway system, and the mile marker is decent, but, I mean, we've, we've been criticized for years over those trail markers. So, just know that.
Well, they, they don't criticize.
That'd be criticism, and I'd be like, oh, dumb system I've ever heard of.
But it's a system.
It is a system, and to be who designed it is going to make sense, it probably will make sense to anybody else, so. Uh, now, but the, the benefit that you can't debate is the, the location.
Right.
It'd be, you say, MD or DT, you know where they are.
Like the state here is people who've been attacked or whatever, any trails throughout.
But that part is critical, if you're the runner that starts at one fifty-seven, goes the other way, and you start a trail, and it's, it'll oxygen system, I would get a lot.
Well, I appreciate it, I mean, why they have to lean to it.
I'm good in that.
What kind of, kind of material are you looking at as far as, is it straight in on the trail, or is it a pole stenching, or?
It is a kind of marker, a small, kind of a branded brass tag that will mail to a tree, but somewhere along, I would say. You know, we don't know yet, to be honest, uh, we've looked at branding, um, you know, pieces of wood from trees that we would bury in the ground and brand, you know, these, like, MT eleven or what have you along the way. Um, there are actual trail identification markers that we could purchase, but we, uh, we feel confident we can make something in house that, that would certainly, you know, solve what we're trying to do here. Uh, rocks, we, you know, we've got a few rocks down Bobby that we've stored through the years that we might be able to use a few of those. Uh, but it will absolutely need to be something big enough, uh, that we can put Mr. Byd himself on our, for questions regarding trail marker system, please call.
Really, that was great, really, I, I know it's, we've got a lot of laughter over this over the years, but seriously, I appreciate that.
I know you're the only one laughing.
And, I know, I know you didn't find that a lot, but I know somebody else did, but I, I appreciate you going there, right?
Yes.
Ray, why are we not going to do distances on the other, is it just not long enough to make it worthwhile?
Well, for instance, Trailwood, there, there's not a quarter mile, that, it would be between, there's not a, what am I trying to say? You can make a quarter mile, but not another quarter mile, it would be shorter than a quarter mile.
That makes sense. Is there the parking at MT one, if people knew that was the beginning of a, of a quarter miles?
At the villages, um, MT one is at the villages, so the others.
It's a bit weird.
I can tell, I mean, it might be great, if you're a quick master.
I think it's one, I think it's, and I do think, Ray, the mile marker issue was a lot more important years ago. Well, seriously, nobody did have an app, everybody now has an app on their phone, or they're carrying some kind of device to tell them. Well, the people who use the trap do.
When I run, I don't carry a phone, as my wife told me when I broke my kneecap, so, I still had to start doing that, so I'd be, I'd like my wife to sign.
It wouldn't do you any good, you couldn't call anybody for that.
We found you, but MT six.
Where I was back running.
We'll put a monument there for you, huh?
And at PR one, you have more walkers than you have runners, so there's not as many people with their own apps there.
Where's PR one?
Uh, Preserves. Preserves.
All right, well, I know the next one's actually up here, so I'll, I'll do more time for that.